Okay, welcome everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. Ask everybody to please be seated. And we'll start with the road calls Suzanne.
Thank you Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Councilmember Sheever.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. We are very fortunate tonight because the Cub Scout PAC 20 is here under the leadership of Melanie Gross and they are gonna do the flag ceremony and pledge of allegiance for us tonight. So, welcome Melanie and thank you for being here.
Hold our attention.
Everybody.
Hold our forward march. Hold our hold. Hold our cross colors. All you please join me in the signing of my allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Post the flag, the United States flag. Close to the Colorado State flag. Hold our return drink. Bell face. Hold our forward march. Hold our hold. All you here seated, hold our here seated.
I'd like to take a minute Melanie and for hold our to find us from there. And Melanie? On behalf of certainly the town of Woodland Park and City Council, this is what makes Woodland Park special. With smiles on everybody's face, we've got great leaders in our community and it starts right here with the spirits. And so, I'm fortunate as the mayor to be able to honor them in a special way and that's given the three of them and Melanie their leader, a mayor's been for being great leaders in our community and very well respected and as you all can see, very, very much appreciated. So, congratulations to y'all. I'm not familiar with the name, so if you tell me the name and tell everybody else, I'm sure they would like to know who you are.
Open drink.
Open drink. Congratulations to you ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Ruth Giscatopoulos.
Ruth Giscatopoulos. I was gonna ask her to spell that.
Ian Walter Meyer.
Ian Walter Meyer. Great work, sir. Congratulations. And Melanie, thank you very, very much. Thank you for your hard work.
Well, thank you for having us here. It was really exciting and just thank you very much. We just passed over to the city council.
And the sisters singing in the background. That's pretty cool. Alright, thanks again Melanie. That was terrific. Okay, we're gonna get away from the agenda just a little bit. We have a special presentation and I see Heidi Troxell. Come on Heidi. Welcome. Would you like to go to the podium? And if you'll just give us your name and address, please.
Yes. Heidi Troxell, 103 Spruce Drive, Woodland Park. And I am Tammy Clark. I'm 6470 Spruce Avenue in Green Mountain Falls. So Tammy and I are here to recognize one of our members. So I'd like to ask Chief DeYoung to come up here and join us, please. And we're here to recognize Chief DeYoung. Tammy and I both work for grants here in Woodland Park and in Teller County that provide underage drug prevention. And about a year ago, I knocked on Chief DeYoung's door and said, "I have a grant. I have money. I wanna help. What are your needs?" And as it pertains to underage drug prevention. And he said, "Oh, where do I start? Where can we go with this?" So, the list got very long. We decided that we've got a lot of wonderful community partnerships already established in the community that we needed to be a part of. And one thing led to another and we developed an organization called Saturn, which is Substance Abuse Threatening Underage Residents Now. And it started with just the chief and I and my boss and a few others and it grew. We meet twice a month and we have about thirty-five to forty regular community members that are there each meeting. And we work on drug prevention and community collaboration. So, we would like to recognize Chief DeYoung for all and the Woodland Park Police Department for all their hard work and dedication to the community and to helping keep our streets safe and work very hard with the Saturn group, developing that group. And so we'd like to present this to you. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, you have something to say?
Actually, I do. Thank you. I think she said it very well when she said this is about the community. So, all I have been doing is just helping fan the fire that she has ignited. And I see a lot of wonderful things with her and Tammy and the Build a Generation folks, the families and communities together and community partnerships and all the other people that we have in this county that are pulling together and just gaining a lot of momentum. So, I'm just helping nudge this along. They're the ones that are doing all the work and it's involving a lot of our community. I see a lot of great things on their eyes. So, thank you. This was very unexpected. So, thank you.
Leadership always has a way of nudging things along. And I've been fortunate to be able to attend some of these meetings, not nearly as many as I'd like. It's at noon on Tuesday. So, sometimes it's a difficult task for me. But to see the group grow to forty, Heidi was here six, eight months ago when we first started talking about this. And the big thing was we talked about, "We have all this money and we don't want any of it to go back to the state. How can we use it?" But then, the numbers of resources that have come along that have expressed interest in and wanna be a part of it, I think is probably the thing that Heidi's most proud of. And so, the future is bright for that group and they're gonna help a lot of people along the way. And it's certainly Heidi and Tammy and certainly Miles that are leading that. So, on behalf of the city, we wanna thank you very much for reaching out to the young ones in our community. And it's very much needed and you guys are doing a great job. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, would you like to say something?
Please do.
About organizations like this, it might be a few people in here that would remember this, but groups like this are formed and a long time ago, several of us formed a group called UPDATE, Youth Pass Drug and Alcohol Task Force. And we've started the teen center, believe it or not. And that growth. But the point I'm making is, it's so neat to see this group get together and you can do so many great things in a community. So, congratulations to you. I've seen this happen before with UPDATE and other groups. And keep it up. It's great. It's what this small community is all about. Thank you. Thanks Ken. Anyone else, council? I'm sorry. Good. Thanks again. Thank you very, very much. I just thank you for your leadership. Okay, we move on to Agenda Item 2B and Bev Hodges. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, City Council and residents of Woodland Park. My name's Beverly Hodges and I am the Teen Court Coordinator for the City of Woodland Park and also the Assistant for Chief of Police here in town. Tonight, I would like to inform you about our Teen Court program and introduce to you our most recent volunteers. They are from the Woodland Park Middle School, eighth graders recruited from the social studies class. And they've been a lot of fun to work with. These students have successfully completed two in-house educational trainings, a coaching session from our very own Judge McClintock, and two mock trials. So, tonight they are here to be sworn in as officers of the court of Woodland Park Teen Court. Just briefly to kinda inform you a little more, there were, there are approximately twelve hundred youth courts nationwide. Woodland Park Teen Court was founded in nineteen ninety-four. Teen Court is a sentencing forum for our young offenders who desire a deferred prosecution through the municipal court. So, when they come to Teen Court, it's for their sentencing. They, it's not a matter of whether they're guilty or innocent because they have to plead guilty in order to go into the Teen Court program. So, the jury consists of teens, so they don't decide whether they're innocent or guilty. They just assess the sentence. Our youthful offenders who go before the teen panel must plead guilty along with their parent and/or guardian consent. They must complete all elements of the sentencing prior to the dismissal of the original charge with no conviction. As the coordinator, I'm involved in all aspects of the Teen Court process from their first appearance and their juvenile arraignments through their compliance or non-compliance of the sentence imposed in a timely manner. So, Teen Court is a court of their peers. So, all the court roles such as prosecutor, defense attorney, the bailiff, and the jury all consist of teens. And the judge is a police officer that presides over the courtroom. Some of the sentencing involved include four jury duties, up to four jury duties and forty hours of community service. It can also include restitution, writing essays, apology letters, counseling, drug assessments, drug testing, creative projects, learning life skills, and online classes depending on the aggravating factors. And now that I mentioned that and you guys met Heidi, this past year, we started working with Heidi along with the chief with the municipal court and our Teen Court program with the Senate Bill 215 to provide substance abuse prevention, intervention, and educational resources for the juveniles that have either been charged or admitted to using marijuana. So, that's been taking off and it's been helping the kids a lot. And I will talk about the misdemeanor offenses can be possession of tobacco, alcohol, paraphernalia, or marijuana. Also vandalism, shoplifting, and harassments are all accepted by Teen Court as long as it's their first time offense. So, thank you for your time. And Suzanne, can you swear in?
Yes, absolutely. If I could have all of the Teen Court volunteers come up and join me after.
And while the teens are assembling, just a little bit of history. You heard Bev mention that Teen Court started here in nineteen ninety-four. There's only a little over a thousand throughout the country. Our team of Teen Court leaders has provided leadership and education across the country. They've traveled to Florida and other places to help other municipalities set up their teen courts. You might think that teens would be easy on teens. I've sat in on several of the teen courts. That is not the truth. They hold each other extremely accountable. And I can tell you that I think it has a much more significant impact on a teen who may be deviating from the true course of rectitude to have their peers administer the punishment than a true court. So, they take this job very seriously. I mean, do you see any of them smiling right now? They're probably not. They take this job very seriously and we should be thankful that we have the leadership for this teen court and that we have volunteers to fulfill those roles. Thank you.
If you will all raise your right hand and please speak your name. I, Speaker DeYoung, to solemnly affirm, repeat after me, to solemnly affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the state of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and faithfully perform the duties of the office of Teen Court volunteer, a pioneer and a volunteer, a pioneer volunteer. Congratulations, everybody. You're sworn in, Ms. Hodges. We'll have you sign your votes of office. And she also has something else written to the number six. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. And the mayor wants to... Derek Kamlow?
So, just to speed up the process a little bit, all the teen court members, again, on behalf of those who play a certain place, I need to say, I'd like to give you a mayor's name or my words, kind of going above and beyond and providing great, great partnership for the kids in the community. And she tells us, is really, really special. And through the days, you're actually a whole kids, in a lot of cases, you're a higher schooler than you are a real course. And so, that says a lot about you are, the impact you're making and all of the things you do. So, thank you all very much. And you can buy and get your other reward, well, only a little just for you. Congratulations.
I have some for you. Leora Maddox? Gretchen Moore? Caitlin McMaster? Ryan Olson? Hayden Michael? Did everyone get one? Thank you guys very much. I'm very proud of you. Excited to be here this year.
Thanks very much. Bev, great job. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 2C and Pat Hislop.
Hello. I'm here at Keep, from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful for our twenty sixteen City Council Annual Review. So, I'll begin by introducing the other members that are here tonight. We have Kay Jacobson, who is our secretary for twenty seventeen. We also have Jan Wilson, who was our chairman last year. We have Michelle and David Perkins, who are, David Perkins is our grant person, as everybody knows, and great volunteers. Missing tonight are Dan Sloan, who's the secretary for twenty sixteen. My, wow, I'm here. I was the vice chairman last year. And then we have Ken Matthews is here, I'm sorry Ken, is our council liaison. Laura Pellegrino is our staff liaison. Abby Woods and Sophie Fox are our school, our middle school and high school ambassadors. Jeff Wheeler is our vice chairman for this year. Renee Bunting and then Linda Garrett. And unfortunately, he's not here, but he was a very important part of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, which last year and before was Lee Willoughby. So, to give you kind of an overview of last year, first of all, we had our art benches, which Lee Willoughby was a very big part of. That's where we would collect the beautiful benches in town that the artists did for us. And we would bring them to Park State Bank where they could be stored in a climate-controlled basement. We'd also kinda give them a little TLC, fix them up for the next year. And then we'd bring them back out in the spring. The next thing that we do is the recycle bins. That program, we work with Bruce Vanderpool, the grounds chief crew, and also Build a Generation Coordinator Karen Casey Savage. And most importantly though, we work with the teens from the teen center. And they helped last year store over two thousand pounds of aluminum cans, glass, and plastics that were collected all over the city. The next program is our outreach and awareness. We work with the enforcement officer Rick, Circa, thank you, Why Should You Mow campaign. And what we do is we go around and we look for people that are doing a good job of mowing and taking care of their lawns. And we let them know that we appreciate it. And with the partnership of Foxworth Galberth, we provide them with a twenty-five percent coupon, which they, many of them have used. They said that we have in twenty sixteen weed and grass complaints decreased sixty-seven percent compared to twenty fifteen. So, successful. Also, on August eighteenth, we gave a beautification awards to Joni's Deli, Curves, and Dana's Dance for their beautiful front yard landscaping. Our next program is Adopt a Garden. This program, we encourage people to adopt flowerbeds throughout the city. To date, there are seven gardens that have been officially adopted. And in twenty sixteen, High Altitude Gardeners adopted the bed fronting Williams furniture and received many compliments for their creative efforts. The next program is Adopt a Spot. This program involves adopting specific streets throughout the city. They're cleaned usually twice a year by dedicated volunteers. There are currently twenty-seven active spots throughout the city. And we added one spot in twenty sixteen. Over ninety pounds of litter, over three thousand two hundred acres was collected. Then probably our biggest event of the year is our cleanups. In twenty sixteen, we actually had two cleanups. We cleaned the Woodland Park Cemetery, removing litter and raking pine needles. And that was in early June. And then on May twenty-first, we, it seems to be an event that just keeps growing. We had a hundred and forty people come out and help us pick up litter throughout the city at the Menland Pavilion. That was our fourteenth annual cleanup. We also did a street sweep coordinated by the Main Street Coordinator Darlene Jensen that resulted in removal of tons of dirt and road debris adjacent to Highway twenty-four. What's really important though is our next cleanup is coming soon. And I would like to personally invite all of you, but in particular, our city council, to join us. And I did see David there and Sally there last year. So, please come and join us. We're really excited this year because Focus on the Forest, Sean Nielsen, I believe, is that right? He is also gonna be doing a Focus on the Forest cleanup. And we're going to join together in our celebration at the end here at the, I have no sense of direction. At the pavilion? Is it over there? So, please come and join us, everyone. For cleanup. There's more flyers near the back. Sorry Sally, but I'm sure you can find it. So, please join us. It's a lot of fun. As far as grants last year, and this is largely due to the efforts of David Perkins, we received a twenty thousand dollar grant from Lowe's Community Impact. It's a Lowe's Community Impact grant. And what we did was we partnered with other groups in the city, particularly with the Woodland Park Arts Alliance. And then what we did was we helped finish Antler, or did a lot to help finish Antler Alley. There's still a little bit left to do. And we also worked with the city with that. They helped with the lighting and such. We also painted the... We also painted the baggage building at the Woodland Station. Did y'all notice that? And then, we also are working on creating a little patio area on the back of the cowhand, and that's part of our tactical urbanism. Does that sound great? And then, also, we donated $10,000 to the DDA to help with the grading of Bergstrom Park. So that was a great success. We're, David keeps going after those grants, so just stay tuned to what we can do next. In 2017, this is what we plan to keep applying for grants. We're gonna maintain and expand our existing programs. We're working with any other groups, like Focus with the Forest, to help with efforts to help keep the area beautiful. And then also, we're looking at maybe some trail enhancements. We'd like to do Centennial Trail Enhancements. And of course, we'd like to get our Barware Program back online. And, most importantly, we are looking for some new members. So if anybody cares about keeping our city beautiful, please, join us and help us with our efforts. So now, I think you want to give us some.
Yeah, please, everybody come up. Clearly, this is a passionate group here, getting, it's about every council, great. Talk about something great that Woodland Park Beautiful has accomplished and today have showed great leadership and everything they do for our community. So on behalf of, help me, Keep America Beautiful. Oh, Keep America Beautiful. On behalf of Keep America Beautiful, Woodland Park Beautiful, has received its 2016 President's Choice Recognition Award. All of Woodland Park Beautiful's communities. Congratulations. Make sure I know David wants to say two words before leaving.
Just two?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you. I heard rumor that you have some recycling situation going on. I was unaware of that. I would like to know more about that.
In 2014, if memory serves me correct, and I'm not gonna say it was 2014, we applied for a grant through Coca-Cola for recycling bins. And you'll see one specifically that is out all the time at Williams Brothers, right in front of there on 24. And we received 17, I believe, total. They're kind of the baby blue, robin blue recycling bins. The Teen Center has several that they do subsorting, which was mentioned in the report. And then for most special events in Midland Pavilion, in the greens, then those recycling bins are put out so that we can collect as much as we can from those areas. I don't, I do not know if we have any more out on a full-time basis in any of the parks. But I'd like to get them out, because we do have 17, so I'd like to use them as much as possible. I know they were out for Oktoberfest and several other things that were held on the greens. I believe it was 2014 we got those. We actually had to go through a 12-month process of measuring our recycle materials and report that back to Keep America Beautiful.
So, so great. So if our household or any household has a collection of cans and bottles and things like that, you can bring them to one of some semi-permanent locations? Yes, no?
No, no, we would like to get something like that implemented, however. But yeah, no, it's not to drop off recycling, it's for event, event recycling.
Thank you, David. Do you have anything else?
Oh, yes. I was just, I was letting that finish.
Go right ahead.
More words. There's my two words. So now I've got to change hats. So David Perkins, 148, Alignide Drive. Tonight, I'm here representing Woodland Park Arts Alliance as the Treasurer, and then also as Chairman for our annual fundraiser. I would like to invite council, staff, live audience, and viewing audience to our sixth annual For Art's Sake Cagan Cork Craft Beer and Wine Tasting, which will be held April 7th, which is a Friday, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the Cultural Center. And I do want to emphasize craft beer. So no, no bed light. Sorry, David. I know that, so I can say that. Our local sponsor is Banana Belt Liquors. And we are trying to piggyback off the success we had with Small Business Revolution and also use this as a way to promote our local businesses by asking local businesses to donate various items that we can use as, like gift certificates, using gift baskets for drawings and those type of things. Not only to promote Woodland Park Arts Alliance, but also to promote the other businesses in town and make people aware of the businesses that we do have in town and then any outside visitors that we may get from outside the area, also to make them aware of the Arts Alliance or the, or small businesses. The proceeds from this fundraiser benefit the public arts programs here in town. And this year's project is targeted for Antler Alley. We are, still need funds to finish off the north arch, which is in the, on the parking lot side of Antler Alley. And we fully expect to get that done this year. We also will have, as soon as this project is over, the fundraiser, we will be having our strategic meeting probably in May or June, and we'll be brainstorming for future public arts projects throughout town. And so we're really excited about that. Also, I wanted to let you know that on March 12th and 13th, the LED lighting will be going in place for the south arch and then also in the alley. So if you, I believe that's a Sunday, Monday. So be looking for that lighting to be taking place. We're super excited about that as well, because that will be the first nighttime highlight of the, of the Antler Alley, the new Antler Alley and the new Antler Arch. And as soon as we get the archway done on the north side, then we'll have another LED lighting for that as well. We're super excited about that project and what we have going forward in the community.
Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it.
Yep, you bet.
Okay, we have no additions, deletions, or corrections. We'll move on to Consent Calendar and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have one item on the Consent Calendar, and that is the minutes of the February 16th regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Council, any questions? If not, we'll call for motion to approve the Consent Calendar. Let's go, Luke.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Cash.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight. So we'll move on to ordinances on initial posting and Sally Riley, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, council members. This is Ordinance 1303 on first reading, and it is a request for a two-year extension of a conditional use permit and site plan review for Big O tires. Two years ago, they were granted a conditional use permit to construct five additional service bays located at 555 Chester Avenue. And we request that you set the public hearing for March 16th.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? This is pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, I had one question. Did ownership of the business change?
No, it's still owned by the Cobenhovlands, so yes.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, I'll call for motion to consider Ordinance Number 1303 on initial posting. So move.
Second.
And a second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. And to start with, Kip Wiley, approving Ordinance 1301 and 1302. You want to take them separately? How do you want to do that?
I'll do them both at the same time, just ask for a separate motion.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Ordinance 1301 and 1302. Bottom line up front, basically, what it would do if approved is change the annual adjustment from 75% of the Consumer Price Index unit to 100% of the Consumer Price Index unit. Also, in 1301, it would also include the capital replacement fee portion of the water bill, which has been the same since 1997. The first slide I have up here is just basically breaking down a utility bill. So on, water on the top, you see that there's the monthly usage charge and then a capital replacement fee beneath that. So both water and sewer have an O and M charge and a capital charge. The Ordinance 1301, like I said, would adjust the capital replacement fee on the water side, where it hasn't been adjusted before. Also, again, changing the annual adjustment from 75% to 100%. Back in 2003, or starting in 2003, the water enterprise started adjusting rates based on the Consumer Price Index to avoid larger increases and stay consistent with inflation, basically. And in 2000, a couple of years later, the wastewater fund did the same. What these, what these two ordinances do is they basically change it from 75% to 100%. Back in 2016, the Utilities Advisory Committee, upon review of the Water Tap Management Plan Reconciliation, determined that it was in the best interest of the enterprises to stay current with inflation, also avoid tap fee increases if possible. Tap fees have increased at 5% a year for every year since 1997, with the exception of a two- or three-year span. I think it was 2008, '09, and '10 when those stayed consistent. I recommend approval of Ordinance 1301 and 1302 after the public hearing, and I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, Council, we'd like to start.
Well, I had a question at the initial posting about the CPI, CPIU, and how that works. And I know in Mountain Jackpot this week, David, I thought you did a really good job of explaining that. But if you could just quickly explain that again and how it impacts the city.
I can do that well, because Mike can do that well. So he's going to do the presentation this evening on that.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The CPI stands for Consumer Price Index. The CPIU is one of the indexes that the Bureau of Labor and Statistics calculates as far as Consumer Price Index goes. And CPIU stands for Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. There's other indexes that don't include all urban consumers. However, the one that most governments use, or even businesses use, is the CPIU. And what the CPIU is used for is to calculate inflation. So how does, how, what is the CPI, or how is it calculated? It's the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, federal government, that calculates it. And what they do is they use prices of products, a wide range of products, consumer products, year over year. So an index was started back, or the most recent index base started in 1982, where the CPI was set at 100. So that index changes based on how prices change for those products that are used in the comparison, year-to-year comparison. And just for example, the Denver Boulder Greeley Index, which is widely used in Colorado, the index is currently at 246.643 Denver Boulder Greeley. And the way that the index is used to calculate inflation is you have an index from, say, 2015, and just for example, it was 239.99. It increased from that in 2015 to the 2.46.6 in 2016. You calculate the percent increase, or in some cases, sometimes it's a decrease, but you calculate the percent change in those two years' index, and there you have the inflation rates. So why do we use, or why do most entities, governments, and even businesses use CPIU, particularly the Denver Boulder Greeley here in Colorado, is because that's the only one that the Bureau of Labor and Statistics calculates for Colorado. It calculates, they calculate it nationwide. I think a lot of people are familiar with the Nationwide Index. In Colorado, it's the Denver Boulder Greeley. And in other cities, it's the larger metropolitan areas that the government, the federal government calculates the CPI for. They calculate it in several regions, four different regions. And then some very large cities, they calculate on a monthly basis. Some cities, which are not as big, are calculated every other month. And then there's other cities like Denver Boulder Greeley, which is calculated every six months. So it's just a very easy-to-use and commonly-used inflation indicator or calculation that is built into different agreements. At the city, we use it for budget projections, for some of our revenues, not all of them. We also use that in conjunction with historical trends and other information that we may have from different departments, from the county, and even from the state and CML, to build our revenue projections. And then we also use it, not across the board, but on a case-by-case basis, depending on the expenditure type, to put together a budget recommendation. It's also used for annual fee updates, like the one you're hearing tonight. By resolution and ordinance, there are several that we have that have that built in as an annual escalator of the rate and fee within those agreements, or within those fees that we have. The CPIU is also commonly used in different agreements that have dollar amounts tied to them, but where you want to have an annual escalator. So with that, any other questions on that?
No, I appreciate the explanation. So basically, 75% of that CPI no longer serves our community. Because my guess is our cost of living and commodities here in Woodland Park and probably along the Front Range is now equal to, if not greater, than Denver Boulder and Greeley.
The price of water continues to grow. Our conveyance fees go up at about 6% to 10% a year, where we've been holding constant. I have prepared a couple graphs if you guys would like to see when we have adjusted rates and how those have occurred in both the water and wastewater funds. But typically, we see greater increases than what our customers receive on the annual adjustments.
Just a bit of history. When the Water Tap Management Plan was established, the city was in a period of fairly strong growth. And the challenge has always been to balance capital revenue with the commodity revenue so that we don't charge new homeowners an excessive amount for that tap fee, nor do we cause existing customers to pay for future development. So when our housing growth was very rapid, we were able to keep the commodity price down a bit, because we did have lots of tap sales. And so now we're trying to adjust it so that we can maintain that balance. We haven't sold as many homes in the last, so we're, what part of this is doing is keeping a balance, again, between the commodity and the ability to join the club of our water system.
Kip, if you could, just on an average, I know it's a hard thing to do, but give me a sense of the increase for a resident in their water bill.
So if, if Ordinance 1301 and 1302 were not passed, the adjustment would go up based on 75% of Consumer Price Index. If you were to approve these two ordinances, the use, or the amount a customer would receive on a bill would be 52 cents per month, based on 4,000 gallons used, which is an average usage for a customer.
That includes wastewater also?
That's water and wastewater together, total 52 cents if these were to be passed. That's water and wastewater together, total fifty-two cents if these were to be passed. And right now is the, as the CPI is.
That's the, that's the increase, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
How would it impact, uh, business?
Um, from a commercial standpoint, it, it's hard to say because it, it varies depending on usage.
So a hotel would be more than a?
Right, so it, it just depends on how much they use and what tier they fall into.
I see.
How much more is this going to cost the city to fill the pool?
A lot. Zero.
No, I'm just kidding. Any other questions?
Uh, just for clarification, there's two percentage increases here. There's twenty-five percent of what we base our cost on, and then there is the, it looks like it's only, based on what I'm reading here, two point eight percent of the bill. Can you explain that? So really, the, the cost of the bill is only two point eight percent, but our usage of the CPI is full, a hundred percent.
Correct.
So, I didn't, I, I guess I just wanted to know, help people understand that. That when we say a hundred percent, we're not raising your bill a hundred percent.
No.
We're only matching it to what the hundred percent of the CPI, your bill is only being raised two point eight percent of what it currently is.
Well, it's, it's going to be raised seventy-five percent of that, two point eight percent no matter what.
Well, that's, right, so there's two percentages here. I hope everybody's understanding that. It's not a hundred percent or seventy-five percent of what your current bill is, it's only a percentage of a percentage.
Hundred cents.
Okay. I don't know if you can clarify that, Dave, but, um, that's how I see it.
The good comparisons to distill that is for the average monthly user, four thousand gallons a month. If we do nothing tonight, that bill would be sixty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Correct.
Sixty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. If you pass this, then that bill goes up fifty-two cents. So let's, let's not talk percentages, that, that, that's the real impact on the bill. But the, the significance is, is it's only fifty-two cents, but next year that would be fifty-two plus fifty-two, and then the following year fifty-two plus fifty-two plus fifty-two. So we continue to lose ground for that, that, that prospect of keeping it balanced between the commodity and the tap fees.
And I understand that. I just wanted to clarify out here because
Sure.
the way it was being described here, it's, it almost sounded like we were raising the fees a hundred percent. I think that's why it's important to have that example to see the true impact, right? But they don't have the example, the public doesn't, so I read it. Okay, thank you. Well, that's what I'm looking at, so.
Go ahead, Val.
Um, I just have my usual caveat statement, which is, um, uh, I, I object to the model of Denver Boulder Greeley, uh, just like I have in other issues three, four months ago. That's my objection to using that, that's another discussion altogether, but I, I really object to us being like Denver Boulder and Greeley because we aren't.
What would you suggest then, councilman Carr?
More mountain community comparatives. And, and that, that may not be a federally calculated, or even state calculated, um, index per se. But that's, that's where I stand on several issues on this, it's just, I, having lived in Denver and Boulder and, and those places, I just really don't want to be like that. But, um, and I think there's a lot of people in Woodland Park who likewise, uh, see ourselves different than those, than those urban entities.
I don't think it's any attempt to be like Denver Boulder or Greeley. It's that it's the state standard, uh, that, that, it's the only one that's calculated. There are no others that are calculated in the state.
So it almost sounds like Val, they should just rename it Colorado Index, huh? Would that make you feel better?
Counsel, any other discussion? Public comment? Do we have anybody here that would like to speak on ordinance thirteen oh one or thirteen oh two? Dan, you can come forward.
Okay.
I would love you to stand up there. I'd love you to give you, give us your name and address before you do that.
Dan Taylor, five four five Creekside Drive, Woodland Park. I just had a quick question, Kip, uh, that's residential. I don't see anything about commercial.
Commercial usage varies all, all over the board, from a thousand gallons to a month to hundreds of thousands of gallons, so.
Are we changing the fee structure at all? Like you have block one, block two, block three, or is just, uh, across the board, just this percentage increase?
Correct.
And so I would see, as a business owner, the same percentage increase.
Depending on, so, yes, that, that percentage is
A quarter of a percent of the ones, yeah. Alright.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, now let's take these one at a time. We need a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen oh one.
Approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
No.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, seven. Five, two, pardon me.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll move on, then, uh, need a motion to approve ordinance thirteen oh two.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Suzanne.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
No.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, two.
Thank you Suzanne. Paul, I'm interested. You didn't say anything in the board, no, could, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, it's just a nickel and diamond of the, uh, community. I believe that, uh, the water, uh, fund is healthy, and, uh, at this point, I reserve the right to vote, no.
Oh, always, I just was wondering, just because you didn't say anything.
I, I, even though it's fifty-two cents, uh,
Fifty-two cents?
Fifty-two cents.
Got it, I appreciate it, I was just interested, that's all. Okay, we will move on to new business. And Val, you want to talk us through this work modification?
Yeah, um, I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, uh, going to give a little more detailed, uh, report in the council reports on the committee action, uh, a little later. This is just a, a kind of a clarification item. We had some discussion in our first meeting, uh, in which we had all, all the currently appointed members. And, um, there was discussion among the members about the vehicles. I went back and listened to the whole council presentation twice, so that's seven hours of listening to tape, to ensure that we hadn't focused specifically on some limitations at all. So, we constructed this out of, as, as pretty much a courtesy, uh, to, to, to put in front of council tonight. To clarify, uh, it's five words, but I'll just, I'll read the background, if, I apologize for reading, but. Resolution number eight thirteen was approved by city council on January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. The resolution contained the following language, da-da-da, whereas, "The city council of, city of Woodland Park is desirous of activating a citizen committee known as the Vehicle Usage Review Committee, V U R C, to review the city's vehicles and present a report to the city council no later than the first December two thousand seventeen city council meeting," quote-unquote. Uh, the, further on the background, please note that the above language makes no distinction about, uh, Woodland Park Police Department vehicles, which constitutes prob, prob, approximately seventeen of the fifty-five total light vehicles. In other words, thirty-one percent of the city inventory. Since the police department vehicles represent a significant portion of the total fleet, the V U R C, uh, voting members unanimously concluded at its initial meeting on February twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, that the PD vehicles should be included in the initial two months of data collection. After that, the V U R C will analyze the PD vehicle data and determine if it's advisable to continue to gather the PD data or in that task after the end of the initial two months of data collection. Uh, we heard from experts in this, uh, field, uh, one of which is in the audience tonight, that the PD actually runs, uh, their fleet well, in addition to the city manager, which are going to be excellent resources for us, uh, there's tremendous expertise there we're going to use. Well, uh, the committee believes that the PD's current vehicle usage may give a subset model for optimal utilization of vehicles that may apply to the entire city fleet. Two months of PD vehicle data collection could prove valuable insight to translate to the rest of the fleet's usage. Collecting data for only two months is felt to be sufficient. PD vehicle data to evaluate whether further months' data collection would be useful or provide any significant change in analysis or conclusions. To eliminate thirty-one percent of the vehicles from the study is problematic for educational as well as methods analysis, so the V U R C recommends council clearly state that all vehicles are open for consideration in this study per the amendment motion recommended below. The data log form, which I'll show later, has been simplified to make the impact of all vehicle usage very easy and, uh, insignificant time impact to all staff, including repetitive usages that may be common among PD staff. Like I say, this was a unanimous, unanimous among the voting members, that we should do that. So as a courteous, courtesy, we're bringing this forward to council. Uh, so the pro, the pros, proposed amendment will include amend resolution number eight thirteen to specifically include the WP PD vehicles in the data collection and analysis through April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. At the sole discretion of the V U R C, the PD data effort may be terminated after two months' data collection, or continued to the end of V U R C activities in December two thousand seventeen. The amendment should read, beginning at the whereas shown above in background, "Whereas, the city council of the city of Woodland Park is desirous of activating a citizen committee known as the Vehicle Usage Review Committee, pren, V U R C, un, pren, to review all," all's a new word, the city's vehicles, uh, new, uh, phrase, including police departments, parentheses, "and present a report to the city council no later than the first two thousand, first of December two thousand seventeen city council meeting." So goes my motion. I lay on the table.
Do we have a second for his motion before we second discuss?
And it, just to be clear, I mean, what you'd be doing is directing staff to bring that resolution back to you because it's not on your agenda and you need the resolution on the agenda that would be modified. So, just the open meetings requirements require that.
So, uh, we have to consider this after it's posted at a next meeting, at a future meeting?
Correct. But, yeah, your discussion can certainly proceed and you can give staff the direction to draft that resolution.
Sounds good. Thank you for that clarification.
So, just to clarify, we have to vote on this three times? Initial posting and then regular posting?
It's just a resolution. You're just be amending a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel?
Uh, I, I'm confused. We publicized in this as new business. We handed this out in advance.
Yeah, with, with the, and, and what the amendment, or what the new business says is V U R C modification discussion. So, when we approve an amendment to a resolution, we would, uh, notice that as propos, approve amendment to resolution eighteen oh nine. So that's what needs to show up on your agenda.
So what is it necessary for us to do now?
Pardon?
What is it necessary for us to do now?
Um, I don't believe anything is necessary now, but it certainly seems like the question has been teed up rather completely, and you can have your discussion, which is, we like the idea, we don't, thumbs up or thumbs down on the idea. Please staff proceed to prepare the resolution and put it on the agenda for next meeting.
So we're not voting on anything right now, we're just giving? Correct.
In, in
Okay.
I'm, I beg your pardon. In the initial, uh, discussion and the approval of resolution, there was no limitations put on this. The committee unanimously, uh, had consensus on doing all the vehicles, so I guess in theory, we don't even have to do anything else, we're just proceed.
It's a council create a committee, council sets parameters for the committee. The council's being presented with a change arguably in the parameters, and so I think you've teed it up perfectly for council. Your question is well-framed in your, um, one page, um, that you read into the agenda, or into the record, and it certainly seems that you've, you're poised to discuss the issue. So, I mean, I, my recommendation would you, would proceed to discuss the issue, or s- seven out of, um, four out of, uh, seven council people say, "We can dispense with discussion tonight, please move forward and put a resolution on our agenda for discussion," and approve at the next meeting.
Should that be in the motion? It's just a directive to staff? So we can discuss and then vote? We can discuss and we won't vote, we'll discuss and vote next time?
No, you'll discuss and direct.
Discuss and direct.
You're discussing and directing staff to either take an action or take no action. If the council says tonight, we're going to proceed with including all the, the police vehicles, we'll begin collecting that data. We're not going to fall behind a month, if that's the direction that council gives us. But it, it really is, tonight, as you are discussing and directing us to then bring back to you this resolution or interpretation.
Well, that, that's, that's my question for clarification. The council will direct the staff to come back with, uh, an amended resolution for us to vote on. Our discussion tonight is whether or not you do that at all.
That's correct. That's correct.
And, and I do think that because council sets those parameters, you can give that discussion absent
Of this.
a amendment to the resolution. I think Councilman Carr is just saying that it would be helpful for everybody if that resolution then, from then on, memorialized that, that level of discussion in that direction. So, I think it's a council create a committee, council can give that direction at any time, you can give it tonight. If you want to do it in the form of a resolution amendment, then that would follow at your next meeting.
And I ask that this come to the council during the, the first committee meeting. Uh, there, in my mind, there was a change in the initial direction or interpretation of that direction. And so, I did not want to violate the intent of the council, and so I, I'm seeking council's direction on this issue.
Go ahead, Kip. Well, I, I guess I'm a little confused. The, the initial resolution, as it's pointed out, I think, I'm just reading it, uh, we are not excluding the police vehicles, right? So, I don't understand why we're doing this at all.
Well, because in the very early discussions, uh, of all of this process, going back to the December eighth work session, uh, the December fifteenth council meeting, even the February twenty-third Vehicle Utilization or Usage Review Committee lead-in and genesis, in that discussion, and I, I too listened to the tapes, uh, it doesn't say we're going to exclude police vehicles in data collection. What it says is, and I'm quoting from Councilman Carr's and Councilman Schaefer's report that they read into the record at these meetings, "Leave seventeen police vehicles as assigned, except for emergency vehicles." All the analysis that was done subtracts seventeen police vehicles. Even on the February twenty-third document, it subtracts seventeen police vehicles from what appears to me to be the analysis. Counsel, I, I, I really do have an opinion about whether or not we should be doing this, but it's your decision, you need to give me the direction. I interpreted all of these documents and all the discussion that emergency vehicles, police vehicles, seventeen police vehicles is what, which is what the police department has, to be exempt from this process. I don't agree that the VERT unanimously concluded to include the PD vehicles. I listened to the tapes too. So, but at, at the end of the day, you get to tell me whether we include the vehicles in the analysis. We be, we began collecting data yesterday with all the other vehicles in the city, so we can catch up with the police, if that's your guidance to me. But that's why this is back in front of you.
But in your opinion, I think what I'm hearing you say, that as it stands right now, the seventeen vehicles are not part of it.
That's the way I'm, I've been interpreting this since this all began, that emergency vehicles, i.e. police vehicles, in their written documents
Right.
were excluded.
Okay.
Okay. The resolution as approved made no distinction between the vehicle fleet and the police departments.
I agree with that too. That's why it's back before you tonight.
Also, I would add that the city manager has read a synopsis of, he's talked about a brief history lesson I put together for all new members of the committee who hadn't been there that was actually generated in October. And so it was a historical perspective. It wasn't a mandate. And we read that to those folks on the twenty-third, but it was way historical. It wasn't, it was, here's how we got here. I can hand those to the council so you can see that exact context of it because it was not a directive. It was history going back all the way to October.
What is the question on the table now?
Well, let me try to tell you, unless you'd rather hear it from?
No, I don't even know what the motion is, is what I'm asking.
There's no motion.
There is a motion.
We gotta, we gotta pull it back.
There's a motion to amend the original resolution.
To recommend, recommend, so we gotta?
Yes. And so we provided the background of where we are and what we think reflects the opinion on the V U R C that we got to at the first meeting on the twenty-third.
There are four voting, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
There were four voting members on the board in the first meeting. Mr. Nakarado, who's at a family event today. I don't see Mr. Carlson, Mr. Schaefer and myself, all were in consensus to include the police vehicles. As Mr. Butterey said, he had a differing opinion, so we wanted to bring it to council. The historical value that we were giving to Mr. Nakarado and Mr. Carlson, having not been in the same meetings as the other three of us, was useful for them to come up to speed, but had no effect on eliminating vehicles. And the recordings reflect that for that meeting, January nineteenth. I read, I listened to him twice. It's three and a half hours, time, so seven hours, and there was no reflection on that. So now what do we do?
The fundamental question to me is simply, why would we not want to include thirty-one percent of the vehicle fleet in the data collection now? Why would we not want to do that?
Well, it could be any number of reasons. We could ask the police chief what his thoughts are on this. Could be a time constraint. We're already short-staffed at the police department. Other could be any number of reasons. We haven't spoken about it, but clearly there could be some reasons.
Well, suppose it takes five or ten minutes?
Suppose it takes five or ten minutes a day for twenty cops and multiply that, you know, over a week, over a month in the cost. That could be a reason.
I don't agree.
No, I'm just, you asked me a reason. It could be. I'm not saying I agree either. It just could be a reason.
Well, for me, it is a reason. I don't think it is appropriate to ask someone who is responding to an emergency to stop and log his odometer reading before he responds.
How about after the incident?
He's back at police department filing a report, which in my mind is more important than capturing every time he sits down in the seat of the cruiser to put down his odometer reading. Would there be another way to do it on a monthly basis? I, you know?
I don't think so. Or we couldn't think of it.
Mine is simply a consideration of those that provide safety and security taking the time to fill out a mileage sheet every time they get in a vehicle.
Well, you either want a comprehensive study or you don't, right?
And then who would then judge whether or not they used their vehicle effectively?
The operator has to do it. Whoever's driving the vehicle.
Exactly.
And half the vehicles are administrative, half are patrol cars.
Exactly.
Yeah. We do not, I'm sorry, do not look for an odometer reader at the beginning of the shift and at the end of the shift, not per trip? It was not, I attended the meeting. Was not a lot of the information on the vehicles being collected by the maintenance because those vehicles are maintained so periodically and turned from the month?
Trip data is critical to do in a full analysis on pooling, on overlaps, on multipurpose purposes. It was presented to us at the meeting that the police department actually is an ideal fleet model. And we've got very interested in that as maybe this is the perfect way to do things, whatever they do in the police department. So we thought not to impact the police department for an entire year, but just get a couple of months' worth of data was very valuable educationally. And certainly, there's things like code enforcement. He's going to be out there all day, so one line. I did, not code enforcement, meter reading. Meter reading all day, round trip, you know, one entry a day, kind of thing. Cruiser might go out and cruise the streets for eight hours or six hours of his day, that'd be one entry. So yeah, we're not talking about, I went over to this place and that place and that place.
Okay, just for clarification.
Yeah.
Well, that's the other part I don't understand now. What is the methodology? What, how will that usage log be used? Are you saying that they could, that any one of the city employees could simply fill it out at the beginning of the day, in the end of the day, at the beginning of the week, at the end of the week?
Well, certainly to be useful, it'll be, it'll be per work episode.
So for the police department, that would mean every time they respond, if you're talking about those that are on patrol?
Somebody who's on patrol is at work. A lot of this is in a building, go out to the car, go do something, come back, get out of the car, kind of things. A cruiser is out there pretty much all day. So it'd be, it'd be less invasive sort of. If that's a perception.
Neil?
Sir?
Um, Miles, doesn't the police department already track the vehicle usage? Is it okay if I ask?
Of course.
Okay. I mean, I would assume that that's done already just by calling dispatch and dispatch and then when they write their reports up and their daily logs, that that should all be in there.
This is the first I've seen this, so I'm trying to play catch-up on what's going on here. I was under the impression that this was not an issue that I was needing to be spun up on. So forgive me if I'm playing catch-up. When the officers come on duty for their day, they call in their starting mileage for their vehicles, for the marked units at the end of their shift, they call in the ending mileage. We've been doing that for a number of years for all of our marked units, when every officer goes on and off shift, when we go off to court, we go off to any other thing that's going on. I've looked at the current form, which logs the weather, which logs the reason, which logs all the other stuff that goes on that is absolutely unrealistic for the officers to have to stop and do. We had a sixteen percent increase in calls for service last year. If the officers are working on a night shift, they've got twenty-two individual water points that we're already logging through dispatch on top of our house watches that we're doing. The sheer busyness of a lot of the stuff that we're doing on top of being short five people, five full positions, is challenging right now. And then I look back at the mechanism that we're currently using for our small shipping pickup truck. And if we're going to use apples-to-apples data, I find it hard for us to be able to give that level of detail, to honestly give that level of detail, to be able to have a true comparison between our vehicles and the other vehicles. I'm more than happy to comply with whatever your wish is. I just think I need to be realistic with the expectations being placed on us and what I'm going to be asking the officers to do. Because we are very busy and right now is our slow time. We've been in our slow time, we pulled in two hundred and twenty cases so far this year. And that involves multiple follow-ups calls and a lot of other stuff goes along with it. So I'm more than happy to help you out with this. It's easy for us to provide start and end odometers for each vehicle that's marked, that's being used. That's something we've been doing for a number of years, but to the level of detail that you're already asking, there's going to be a lot of errors and I try to have them do that and that's just going to be quick.
Now, is there a way to, it sounds like we have the data already. Do we need to, is there a way we could get that historical data for two months?
Absolutely.
Val, would that be maybe an option here?
We need consistent data and I'm certainly happy, I meaning the committee, certainly happy to get with the city manager's approval, of course, to get together and see where we've got some overlap. Maybe there's not much to do. We certainly aren't requiring weather. I heard you say weather. We don't have anything about weather.
I included that one because it's very important. If you're wanting a full analysis, as an example, yesterday morning it was icing. And so there were certain heavy vehicles that were out sanding, which meant that the light vehicles weren't being used. And so if there's a column in your final analysis that shows that there's no use for a light vehicle, it's important for you to understand why. And so I, as you allowed me to do, I inserted that single column and that's the only change to the document that you had was weather, because I think it's an important component.
And we talked about this in a committee meeting. There's going to be other examples that are similar to that and we expect to get educated as we go for circumstances like that. Because you're absolutely right. We'd say, hey, gee whiz, two days, these vehicles were down, were they broken, whatever. And your fleet staff and yourself and everybody, we talked about this in the committee and whether it's weather or some other reason, there are going to be other reasons. We're looking forward to getting that information. Because as you pointed out in the committee, it happens quite often.
Claire?
Sir?
So Val, would it be wise at the moment to withdraw the motion? See what you can work with the police department, see what data they have first before we do this all encompassing? And then if it's the day you require the two months and you feel that it's not enough, bring that back and we can change the resolution.
I'm, Aaron, help us if you can. I'm not even sure where we're at at this point. I, we were talking about going forward with the resolution. I think, yeah, in the meantime, we could probably meet with David and the chief and maybe do some of that.
So in the case that we'll let the staff do the resolution and we have to vote on it anyways.
No, no, we don't.
We don't vote on the resolution?
No, we don't, we don't have to move forward if four out of three of the council say there's no reason to amend the resolution.
Right now, we have two, we have a motion and we have a second.
Correct. That is to ask the staff.
To withdraw it, to get the information. If we do need to amend the resolution, then bring it back to council and then we'll do that. That's what I'm suggesting to Val at the moment, because we have not, this is the first time we've talked to Miles about this and it sounds like they collect the data already. Maybe this is an opportunity for you guys to actually see what they have first before we, you know, dig too deep and try to change their procedures and processes. Let me just to add, no, not confusion, but clarity. The police department has eighteen vehicles assigned. But jot that number down, eighteen vehicles assigned. Of those eighteen, one is an old military deuce and a half that is a mobile emergency operations command post. It's not a light vehicle. It's a two and a half ton truck. So that doesn't fit the light admin vehicle category, so we did not include that one. The other is the small pickup that we described to you that has the lift on it for the picking up dead deer on holidays and weekends, so we don't have to call an on-call person in and make additional overtime payments for that. We have ten marked cars. Ten marked cars? We have two detective vehicles unmarked. We have two commander vehicles unmarked, the victim's advocate unmarked, and the chief's vehicle. So when all those vehicles go out, except for the deuce and a half and the pickup, they call in, don't they? Do they call in with their mileage, just like the ten patrol cars do?
Uh, no, only the marked patrol cars.
Oh, marked patrol cars. Okay. So that ten vehicles, our fleet maintenance crew chief then collects that information. So that's relatively easy to provide if you want a historical perspective on those ten vehicles. But the other six, I had mentioned, two detectives, the commanders, victim's advocate and the chiefs.
Val, so you know my objection. First, what I'm hearing from the chief and so to kind of what Noel said, maybe the idea of revisiting with the chief, see what they're doing, withdraw your motion for now, come back, you may have a different opinion. But still, back to the beginning with you and John, I always have the same issue. And that is, especially now with the police cars, you want to collect data for two months and then and then try to tell us or tell them, you know, that the use is proper or not? It seems like an awful short amount of time. Even if it's a longer amount of time, I still don't know what the metrics are to make that decision. I still don't get that.
You misunderstand our mission. Right now, we're just, we're just trying to gather data. We're not making any judgments at all. We heard in the first meeting something that was news to some of us, which is the police department operates really well and has a model that we may be able to use throughout the whole city fleet. And so we said, aha. Maybe we should see what kind of data comes out of that and that'll tell us a whole bunch about how useful it's being run already. So it's kind of a translation thing. We're in data collection mode now. We're not in any kind of analysis at this point.
How about we consider letting the police vehicles go for now? And work on the other thirty-one vehicles, collect that data in the meantime. While that's going on, you and John and the chief and the city manager have the discussion and see exactly what they're doing now before we make any rash decision as to how we're going to move forward. Doesn't that make sense? Now, if you spend two weeks, this next two weeks before our next meeting, and then you decide that, you know, it's just not all the information that we need and then you can present your case in the meeting afterwards, we could amend the resolution or not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to work with a schedule problem. David and I agree a hundred percent on the problem when you have a subset of data, whether it's a section or a front end thing. And in this case, because we'd be only looking at two, and it may, it may be that we see such a trend that we'd like to collect more data if it's not too impactful, but but we thought two months is going to tell us everything we need to do on that. And remember, it's thirty-one percent of the whole study, so once you start eliminating thirty-one percent. And our, the committee's instinct was that this would be educational as much as anything else.
The cost of education is going up.
So, so I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just worried about, you know, we'll get to this in May, kind of thing.
Yeah. I mean, would you consider, I'll get to you, Ken, would you consider spending some time with David and
Oh, absolutely.
And the chief, the next week or two, see exactly what they're doing, come back in two weeks and then make another?
Should we maybe put this out there and in the meantime, we'll educate ourselves better?
Or we withdraw it until you speak. You might change your mind and then we can kind of kill two birds with one stone. Does that make sense?
Withdraw.
But the other consideration is, you, you know, would you judiciously ask for two months of data from the police department? What if the type of record keeping they do now, which happens every day, every week, every month, you just have access to that?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You want to see if that's enough, what they're doing now, if that's enough, then we can put that aside? And is that something that you guys can meet with them the next couple of weeks before our next meeting and then go from there?
Yeah, I just don't want to get, you know, we're getting this process where we're going to go back and forth, they're going to do this, blah, blah, blah. Suddenly it's May and now we said, oh, gee whiz, now we really look like that data. It's May.
Well, I get it. But this will be still March. It'll be our next meeting. Ken?
I've thought about this a lot since this whole committee was formed, which I voted against and still support against it, because backing up and looking
against and still support against it, because backing up, looking at the big picture, the investigation of this detail, in my opinion, would be generated because there's a big problem. I haven't seen that big problem. Why are we doing this? I'm sorry to get back to that point, but I don't understand why we picked this to in burden the staff, the police and everybody who's studying this. So anything that makes that even worse, especially on the police department, I can't support. I don't know why we did this to begin with. We did form the committee, I was outvoted, I will support that, I have to. But I don't understand why we're doing all this and taking up all this time for something, you know, in my opinion, isn't a problem to begin with. So that's my fundamental issue, I'm sorry, but it is.
Val, would you consider withdrawing your motion so we can move on with the idea that you and, and John and, and David and Miles will meet in the next week or so and just discuss what they're doing and come back with that report for us and what your findings are? Does that make sense?
Yes, with the city manager's concurrence with, with...
Of course, of course. But set a time where we can do that, we'll bring Mark McLean in as well, because he's the keeper of the logs and we'll see.
You good with that? Both, motion withdrawn?
Thank you.
Second withdrawn.
Thank you. All right. I have, uh, we are in public comment and we have somebody that signed up and we probably should have Scott Davis come up and talk to us right now while we're on this, so just...
Are you going to?
Were you talking about this?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll call you when the time's right. I'm sorry, I had you down as number eight.
I, I parked down slightly.
It's okay, it's okay. Okay. So we will move on to item number nine now and public comment on items, and since you're really close, even though you didn't sign up first, Scott, come on up.
Scott Davis, eighty-two fifty in Portia and Cascade. First off, I'd like to thank all of you guys for what you do. We live in a great town, even though I live in El Paso County, I work in a great town and I appreciate everything all of you do. I'm here representing the Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club, and on Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, we're having our annual donkey basketball game at the high school. The city has a team. Dave Buttery loves riding a donkey, so he will be there, hopefully Noel rides again, maybe Suzanne will ride or Chief DeYoung will, I don't know.
He was there last year.
Huh?
I was there last year.
Okay, great. But we want to invite the community to come out, because a hundred percent of the donations and proceeds goes right back in the community, we keep nothing besides that. So I'm here to just give Dave some posters and hopefully you guys have a great turnout. Teller County Sheriff's will be a team, Caris Bible College will be a team, and Teller County Search and Rescue will also be a team. So it'd be great if everybody showed up. Again, that's Monday, April seventeenth, five-thirty. Can you make it?
Is it on your calendar?
It's on my calendar, this is true. I sustained a significant injury recently that may preclude me from playing, however, we will have a team.
Yes.
We will be defending two years in a row first place.
Did we win last year?
Did we win last year? I thought Caris won last year.
No?
Caris won.
No, we won last year.
Why, Caris won last year?
They did. The year before that, which I did first. You know, I tried to put that out of my mind, a loss like that.
It would make sense that Caris would win because she's using donkeys.
It's true.
You know, in the Bible, they use the donkey.
Regardless, we have a, we feel the city team that is spectacular, Kiff usually heads up that organization and it's just a lot of fun. If you've not ridden, seen donkey basketball, it's an absolute...
It's really good. Last year we made about six, last year we made about sixty-five hundred dollars and our money goes towards free eye glasses for members of the community. We've done a couple of eye surgeries, we support the Lions camp up Highway sixty-seven, past the golf course, both food banks in the community, lots of really, really good stuff that just goes right back into people of need in our community and we just would really like your support. The second thing I'd like to say, I wish I had some more hairs for you all to spoil. Thank you very much.
Whoa, whoa, wait, where are you going? Stay there, stay there Scott.
What?
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Davis needs an honorary mayor's pin, do you have one?
A mayor's pin, oh. Oh, you... Of course, for all you do, are you kidding me, sixty-five hundred dollars last year to our community? There you are. On behalf of Noel Sawyer and the rest of the council and city, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks Noel. Tell them that's your best friend too, tell them that.
Yeah, we did go hiking this morning, all right.
All right, next I've got Deb Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Deb Miller, twelve forty-six Ethereal Circle, Colorado Springs. I wanted to come to you tonight and talk about three different things. In the newspaper this week was our announcement about our annual dinner and our awards, and so I wanted to share with you a couple of things about that. First of all, our wagon boss this year is Vera Egbert. By the way, first time in eleven years we've had a woman in the wagon boss, so I'm pretty glad to see that. Our business of the year is Anderson Enterprise and our nonprofit of the year is Discover Goodwill, the Woodland Park Store, so we're thrilled with that. But I wanted to share about two other awards and one being our volunteer of the year. With your discussion earlier, I think it's appropriate to note that our volunteer of the year comes from the Woodland Park PD. And he donated, now think about this, nine hundred and seventy-seven point five hours last year to the Woodland Park PD. And when you think about the fact that there's short five officers and what this gentleman has done by buying his own equipment, being there to serve this community, Bill Schultz, we are so thrilled to honor him on March seventeenth. Second person that I'm going to talk about tonight is our employee of the year. And it's the first time in my eleven years of being here that a full staff got behind that nomination and nominated your city manager to be our employer of the year. So congratulations to David Buttery and to Bill Schultz with the police department. We're so thrilled to honor them on March seventeenth and I hope you will attend to be able to do that. And lastly, I wanted to say a thank you to city manager David Buttery for taking our chamber sta, our chamber board of directors on Monday out to visit the Aquatic Center. Your construction manager Rick was amazing taking us through there, showing us what was going on and making us actually feel welcome in that we were not in the way. Yet I know what this will do, will generate talk in the community from those board members going out. They were excited to see the progress, to hear how quickly and great things are going. We'll continue to work on chamber weather for you so that we can see that opening in October, but we want to thank you for taking us out there and having the chance to go through that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Buttery.
Thank you.
Very, very cool. Okay, anybody else have any comment this evening before we move forward? Okay, we'll move on to mayor's reports and if you'll excuse me for a second, I need to get to the right place on my phone. Again, Woodland Park has lost one of our key contributors to our community, Mary Gunzel, passed away February twenty-eighth. If you knew Mary, she was just an awesome individual. She was the founderess of El Tesoro Retreat Center and was co-chair of Celebrity Breakfast in, in Fort Worth. She was in any number of businesses in our community and just provided great leadership and for those of you that haven't been to El Tesoro, that retreat has served a number of groups throughout the last couple of years and will continue to for, forever and ever. The funeral will be at El Tesoro at one o'clock on Saturday, so those of you that can't attend, that would be wonderful. She will be missed. My email from Steve Randolph said, if desired, contributions can be made in Mary's memory to the Nuestra Sonora de la Paz Foundation in support of El Tesoro Retreat. So once again, funeral service will be Saturday, this Saturday, March fourth at El Tesoro at one o'clock. Okay, a couple of announcements that I have. March fourth, starting at four-thirty, also Saturday, the Ninth Annual Wild Whiskers benefiting Teacras at Shining Mountain Golf Course. I understand they're sold out, about two hundred and fifty guests, so always a great event and, and those people that love their animals are very, very passionate and they will raise a lot of money that night. Friday, March seventeenth is the Chamber Annual Dinner at Shining Mountain Resort. Looks like we're going to get great weather, so no excuses. I, I know we've had over four hundred, we, that's had over four hundred people there the last number of years, so one of the bigger events that this community holds, even though we don't have a place here in town to hold it, but the Shining Mountain Conference Resort does a great job, so look forward to that and to celebrate all our, all our winners. One other thing, on Monday, we've put together a, a group, we thought that David and I have talked, as have many of you, relative to Highway twenty-four, and I thought that the responsibility lies right here with the leadership in terms of what we're going to do relative to the future of Highway twenty-four and in turn the future of Woodland Park. So this Monday, we're going to start those discussions with CDOT and Pike's Peak Area of Council Governments. I know that, that Main Street's very interested, I, I know DDA, I know everyone in this community is interested. And the increase in traffic through the years has been more than palpable. What we're going to do in the future, nobody really knows, and this won't be that discussion on Monday. This discussion will be more about what are the steps that we can take to move forward. So learning a little bit more from CDOT and PPACG and Norenstein, our county commissioner, and the others that will be involved in, in that conversation will lead me back here in a couple of weeks to kind of indicate where we need to go, what we need to do, what discussions we need to have, because I think it weighs heavily on everybody's mind. And I always say this, most people want the traffic off Highway twenty-four and most of the people don't want that traffic in their backyard. So clearly a catch twenty-two, how we're going to deal with that, we'll know a little bit more going forward, so I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Okay, move on to council's report and before, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll have that announcing just in a minute.
Sure, I think the city's going to do that for staff. Before we go forward, I got to thank Suzanne and Carol for the great chili we had at our earlier meeting tonight. Thanks very much, delicious. Carol, you're up.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Val?
I have a couple of things. Like I say, if anybody was paying attention, we had a vehicle committee meeting, V U R C meeting. We got started, it was long-winded, that's my fault as usual, but we got a lot of background information going. I think we've got some good starting points. We came up with a vehicle log that I understand yesterday or the day before, the city manager had a training session and we're well on the way towards starting to gather data, because that's what we're doing now, that's, that's about it. We, we are down one member who had to withdraw, so we still have two openings and it'll remain posted on the website until such vacancies are filled. I, so that's, that's my report for that. Now, Main Street, we're working on bylaws, I guess forever, we're going to work on bylaws at Main Street. And that's the most significant thing they're doing after the revolution kind of didn't fizzle out, but we were, we, we, top eight is pretty good in, in Sweet Sixties, NCAA, so I guess we'll, we'll take it that way. I've been getting calls and emails and Facebook posts and all kinds of stuff about something that I wanted to bring up to the city, it, it, it's in regard to the pool. There's some concern and, and I have, this is, this is me putting this on the table for others in the know to address, which is, so there's some concern about people having restricted donations. They restrict them to the slide, they restrict them to the fireplace, whatever, and they're concerned that if those, especially the slide, does not get allocated, that they don't get their money back, it just gets put in some other place. I have a personal opinion on that, I won't register, but I would like to welcome the city to address that, if not the Woodland Act. I don't know who's collecting the money and who's doing that, that accusational thing. I'm not accusing anybody of it, I'm just saying I'm getting a lot of flack and it would sure be nice not to...
The city manager can speak to that.
Absolutely. The donations, for the most part, have either been to what I'll call the General Aquatic Center or donations that have been provided for naming rights. For example, today, I received a donation and that couple wanted to have some plaques on trees. So the money goes into the larger pool, no pun intended, to pay for the entire project. The, we are, there is a fund, raising effort by the Woodland Aquatic Project and the city to fund the slide. You recall that it was one of the add alternates to the project. We're well on our way to reaching that goal. One of the misconceptions, and I'll, I'll take the credit for that or the blame for that, is that if we don't raise this money, we will never get the slide. The information that we put out on several occasions, but clearly not enough, is that what we're trying to do now is raise that money by March seventeenth. March seventeenth is the date that we need to tell the general contractor to order the slide, have it manufactured, have it delivered, so that the general contractor can install it, so that it's in place on the day that we open the Aquatic Center. If we don't raise that money by March seventeenth, we will eventually have enough money to purchase the slide. I just can't guarantee that it would be in place on the day that it opens. So the money will always be there to be used for the slide, and as our revenues grow, which they will do, we will, we will eventually generate the money to get the slide. We're putting in the foundations, we put, as you, as some of you have seen, we've put in the, the rundown, the, the monies will be for the fiberglass tubing, the steel structure that holds that up, and then also the steel staircase and the platform and the pumps and the piping. So if they make a donation, first of all, the donations, there, there's not a pot of money for a tree, it's that they donate the money and then they get a plaque on the tree. So if people are donating money in hopes of getting the pool, excuse me, the slide, it will eventually get the slide built. So there's no, there should be no fear that the slide's not going to happen, it just may not be there before we cut the ribbon in early October. Our goal, and we're, we're probably, we're already well over twenty-five percent of the amount needed, and that amount grows daily, so I have high confidence that we're going to reach that goal and that the slide will be part of the project that is opened in early October. I can't guarantee that, but that's certainly our goal.
I, thank you for your explanation. I'm, I'm just going to throw out a suggestion in accountant's terms, if we could explain, somebody, maybe the, I know that Bob Carlson at WAP has really taken heavy heat for this. If, if there was some possible way to explain that it's not just going to be diverted someplace else, it is really in a pool someplace, it's a ledger item, whatever you want to call it. I think that the confidence there would be welcomed by the public, that, so I can explain it to them.
Sure, and I'll do that. I'll talk with Woodland Aquatic Project, that, that information, I actually posted it on Woodland Underground, the video that was done, very nice video, and there were many questions there and I, I provided that as part of the answer, but we'll do that again, we'll get the word out as much as we can.
Maybe they have a pre, an FAQ, I think, maybe?
I'm sorry?
Do they have an FAQ, frequently asked questions?
I think so, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll do our best to give more information out.
So I can say, go look at their FAQs.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Well, I think Pat Hissler did an excellent job of presenting Keep Woodland Park Beautiful and what we've done and what we're planning to do, and as you can probably tell, she has... has just a little bit of excitement and enthusiasm to lead this committee and she'll do a fine job. She's very involved in our community and we're very pleased to have her there, so it will be done well. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sawyer?
On the intergovernment meeting on Monday, it's got at eleven o'clock, down in Colorado, Lower Colorado City.
Yeah, one o'clock here. One o'clock here. It's gonna be in the conference room or did we decide?
I'd have to check my calendar, but it'll be here at City Hall.
Here or upstairs, I don't know how many are gonna show up. We, we asked seven or eight people, certainly anyone here is welcome.
I wanna thank, it was great participation tonight at the meeting with the teen court, the Boy Scouts. I found it very refreshing to see all those young faces and see and participate in what we do. And I wanna thank everybody for the patience and time.
Thank you. Mr. Sawyer?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shafer?
Question about the teen court, is there a schedule or can we attend?
Bev, would you come up to the podium, please, so that the audience can hear you? Thank you.
Yes, you're more than welcome to attend. It's normally the fourth Wednesday of the month, but you may want to call me to make sure we're having teen court. Sometimes we don't have defendants every month, yay. So it depends, but we do have teen court next, March twenty-second.
Where at?
Here, right here.
Oh, wow.
The, the teens will be sitting in your seats.
Wow. What time is it?
It's at five-thirty, we only have one case that night. Takes about forty-five minutes.
That was an impressive group of eighth graders. When I tried to think what I was doing in eighth grade, it was nothing like that.
I was pretty impressed with the scouts. I thought if I had that kinda confidence at that age.
John, I was the guy that they were prosecuting. So a little closer to it than you were.
And my, my last comment would be that, yeah, I'm very tired from the vehicle usage discussion and in no condition to drive home, so I wonder if Chief DeYoung will take me home with my business vehicles.
You have to log that in?
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Okay, welcome back to our city attorney, we've missed the last couple of meetings.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, I've, I've missed you as well. I have a short report and that is to report back to you on a question that has come up and it has to do with Counsel's role as liaison on various council committees. And the question really is, what governs that role? And I would tell you that it's a three-part answer. The first part is typically when civic organizations, counties or cities have city or county-created committees, what they expect the role of the liaison to be is really a reporting-back role, keeping the council or the county commissioners apprised of that committee's activities and business. So that's the first, first part of that answer. The second part of that answer is, it's often what the predecessor in that position did, so the person in the liaison role wondering exactly the extent of what their role is on a particular committee can certainly check in with who they are replacing. The third part of the answer is that, to the extent that council ever passed any sort of resolution or ordinance setting out that role, then that would also inform and, and set the parameters for that role. That is something that I have not looked at, should council desire to have that kind of review done, I imagine it would be a couple of hours of attorney time, it would be probably more time for the city clerk and her office to kind of do that review, to look for any prior resolutions or ordinances. I would expect that there probably aren't any of those because the role of liaison is very typical from city to city and it probably amounts, as I say, to essentially a reporting-back role or the, the role of the predecessor. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple, as one would expect. So we can't, we, we kind of went over this a couple of meetings ago, liaison back and forth, I can understand that. Main Street's going through an insurance evaluation at this point. They said, everybody on the board, and, oh, and you're an ex officio member of the board, but you're not covered, kinda thing, and so I got into the, the discussion of ex officio liaison as opposed to whatever, and I did take Latin, so I know what it means, but what it functionally is and how it approaches in those kind of organizations is problematic because they don't know how to insure, they don't know, use it over there, you know, it's kind of, it's, it's really a hard, like I said on Parks and Rec, and that's easy, we just, you know, we'll hang out and if I have something to say and they ask me, I tell them or vice versa. This one's a little different and it's because they call it an ex officio and, and they're, and because they are going through bylaw changes and, of course, we don't assign, the council doesn't assign anybody to Main Street, so we're kind of, it's just a harder one than normally the boards that we appoint. I'm not, did you get a question out of that? I don't know if I even asked one, but it's, it's a little confusing at this point.
Yeah, and, and that's a really a different topic because the, and I would need to review further documents, but I understand the Main Street bylaws set the role of the ex officio board member, so as I understand, their bylaws do provide that one of their board members will be a city council member and then their bylaws do provide that that member would, that, that city council member would sit in that office as an ex officio member and would not have a voting right on that board. So that's really a different subject than this liaison role that we're talking about. I do think that to the extent that there is sort of a crossover of issues, everything from application of open meetings laws and open records laws and, and the insurance issue, that it's probably worth spending some time discussing. And I've had a couple of initial discussions with Jane Mannan about that and I would expect that if Jane and the city manager wanted to carry on those discussions with the city attorney, that I would be asked to have those further discussions.
Yeah, in the meantime, I'm just pretending like I'm a piece of the public, frankly, 'cause...
I think you can do more than that. I think that as, you're, you're an ex officio member, that I think there's an expectation that there will be a transfer of information. And so Aaron made the statement about it's very different than the liaison, perhaps in semantics, but I think in, in a practical way, there's an expectation from the council historically that you will carry information from council decisions that benefit the Main Street board and conversely, they, they, I believe, should have an expectation that you will bring back to council things that happened on the Main Street board that would be of interest to the council. I think it, it really is that simple. Councilman Sawyer sits on the D.D.A. board, by virtue of state statutes, he's a voting member. By virtue of Main Street's bylaws, you're not, but you, but the function is still somewhat similar in that you're transferring information between the two entities.
So, so if you have those discussions, for instance, usually board members sit in executive sessions.
You're an ex officio board member.
Yeah, I think their particular bylaws say that the non-voting members do not sit in executive sessions.
Yeah, of course, they change every meeting, but yes.
They're existing, they're existing bylaws that I think were approved, so.
Okay. Thank you. Bev? Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things this evening. Sally?
Thank you. I wanted to call your attention to the Les Malat Junior Civic Achievement Award. On this evening, we heard reference to Lee Willoughby. He was the recent recipient of this award. And Lee served on many, many committees in our community, which is why he received this award posthumously. It included the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. I first met Lee when he volunteered for the Comprehensive Plan and sat on that. He also was the founder and principal spokesman for the Harvest Center and served on the Utility Committee for a little while. He was a member of the Main Street Board and Subcommittee as well as president of the Teller Park Conservation District. So just an outstanding individual.
Thank you, Sally.
Cindy?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. About eight months ago, a little bit longer than eight months ago, we had our very first celebration for the Woodland Aquatic Center and that was the groundbreaking. We have another one coming up here. Next Thursday, March ninth, at eleven o'clock, we are going to be having the topping-out celebration at the Woodland Aquatic Center. At eleven o'clock, we have a beam that we will be, have, that will be on sawhorses and you're all welcome to join us and sign the beam and then we'll have a small ceremony and that beam will be placed on the Aquatic Center. It is actually potentially one of the last beams to be placed on the Aquatic Center and that's why it's a celebration. And we would like to invite you and the entire community to come and join us in this. After the beam is in place, we're gonna do site tours and if you have not had the opportunity to be inside of the Aquatic Center yet, you would be very impressed and you would enjoy the tour. Our contractor team will do site tours, staff will do tours, and our architect team, our design team will do tours as well. There'll be snacks provided by our contracting team and it will just be a really nice event to just show off everything that's been accomplished. As you drive by there, every day you see the progression happening and it's just really exciting and we would like to invite you and the entire community to join us on Thursday, March ninth, at eleven o'clock. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. Continuing with the theme of the Aquatic Center, through value engineering, we were able to have about a twelve-thousand-dollar saving on some of our light fixtures based on a decision that was made earlier in the project to go from some copper wire to aluminum wire, so that changed some of the lighting and it reduced that cost, so we're pleased to report that to you. On the Vehicle Utilis- Usage Review Committee, Counsel will recall that there was a discussion last meeting about John Hanlon. Councilman Carr mentioned that he was not going to be on that committee, he decided to stay on the Board of Adjustment, but he will be attending the meetings as a public member as he can. We have received one other applicant for that committee, I think we got it yesterday or the day before, and that will come to you at the March sixteenth meeting for another member of the Verge. That's all I have unless you have questions of Mayor's staff. Thank you.
Bev, thanks very much. Couple of things, John, everybody on community investment, we have three letters today, short letters I'd like to read quickly. This from the Woodland Park Wind Symphony. On behalf of the Woodland Park Wind Symphony and supporting musical ensembles, I wish to thank the Woodland Park Community Investment Committee and City Council for the kind contribution of nine-hundred dollars toward the continued development of W.P.W.S., Woodland Park Wind Symphony. For the past many years, we have received financial support from the W.P.C.I.F. I wish to ensure you such funds are what help makes the W.P.W.S. and its musical ensemble some of the finest musical elements for our growing community. Once again, thank you very much. Craig Harms. And their upcoming event, March twelfth, the Mountain Brass Quintet is at the Gold Hill Theater, that's just a week and a half away. This is from the Welcome Home Warriors in addressed to Suzanne. I would like to thank the City of Woodland Park for the generous donation, excuse me, for the generous grant of one-thousand dollars. This donation will go towards our next family retreat for combat veterans, April twenty-first through the twenty-third. Since these retreats are free to these families, we do ongoing fundraising. We are usually able to do two retreats a year in the fall and spring with the money we raise. We have been doing these retreats since two thousand and eight. We expect to continue to do them as the need continues, reaching out to the many veterans and their families for help with the effects of the multiple deployments and the aftermath of combat exposure. Yours truly, Donna Fennickel. Donna Fennickel, thank you, Donna. And the last one is from Daybreak and Adult Day Program. Dear Mrs. Ms. Leclerc and Woodland Park City Council, we are very grateful for the contribution from the Community Investment Fund in the amount of one-thousand dollars to Daybreak, an Adult Day Program for our newly established Mobile Community Connect Program. We are excited to get our participants out and about and connect them to our Teller County region and we are thrilled that you share in our enthusiasm about this new community program. We invite you to please stop by for a tour of Daybreak anytime, Monday through Friday, between nine and five, we'd be happy to show you the program firsthand and have you meet some of the participants who will be benefiting from this award. With sincere gratitude and appreciation, Paula Levy, Director. And that's all I have. Anything else, Counsel? Great, good meeting, this meeting's adjourned.